All right, let's call the Bonnie Lake City Council's special workshop with May 17th, 2022. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Get everybody standing to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you come and roll? Please.
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Requining. Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Okay, I believe Deputy Mayor, uh, the Deputy Mayor on it, from, on, stating that he is on vacation. Do we have a motion to excuse in from our meeting tonight? So, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any names? There we go. Alrighty, so let's go forward with the agenda items. There is one proclamation that I will read. It is, whereas being a police officer is not just a job, it is a calling. It's a commitment to service, a commitment to community, and a commitment to standards and values we hold dear. And whereas our Bonnie Lake Police Officers are essential to the people who live in our community, they go to work every day to protect our families and children as well as our schools, homes, and businesses. They are a symbol to our community of honor and integrity. And whereas our Bonnie Lake Police Officers face extremely dangerous situations at the time. And whereas we are seeing an alarming increase statewide and nationally of officers, deaths and injuries while in the line of duty. And whereas, by this, our Bonnie Lake Police Officers continue to put on the badge and provide an exceptional level of service to our community at great risk to their potential safe or to their personal safety and sacrifice of their families. And whereas our law enforcement professionals need community support now more than ever. And whereas we must continue to support and enable our police officers to enforce the laws in a way that keeps our communities safe. And whereas recent laws have made the task of carrying out these duties more difficult for police officers in our city and throughout this state. And whereas we have seen a dramatic increase in crime and a dramatic decrease in arrests. And whereas we call upon these within the city of Bonnie Lake to stand with us and pledge a solemn vow to honor, respect, and support our law enforcement agencies and those that serve within them. And whereas we must come together as one city and one community, united towards a common sense or common cause of protecting those who are supported to protect us, our police officers. Now, therefore, I, Michael McCullough, Mayor of the City of Bonnie Lake, Washington, with the full backing and encouragement of the entirety of the Bonnie Lake City Council, do hereby proclaim absolute unwavering support of our Bonnie Lake Police Department through the creation of a citywide movement called Bonnie Lake Strong, Bonnie Lake Blue. The purpose of this movement is to show overwhelming support for our Bonnie Lake Police Department and all law enforcement and peace officers as well as to honor those who have bravely, who have recently paid the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty and service to our community. Therefore, I encourage every resident and business owner within the city of Bonnie Lake and furthermore, all those across the valley and plateau to illuminate blue light bulbs on their homes and in their businesses as a symbol of solidarity for our Bonnie Lake Police Officers. Let these lights be displayed promptly, proudly, and courageously so that our police officers, our surrounding cities, and our state legislators will know beyond a shadow of a doubt that we within the city of Bonnie Lake stand strong with our Bonnie Lake Police Department and all law enforcement agencies across this great nation. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Bonnie Lake to be affixed this 17th day of May 2022. I think that deserves an applause. Madam Clerk, you have handed that to our chief. The one whereas we forgot was just how good of an MC our chief is. All right, now onto council open discussion. Anybody have any thing they wish to openly discuss? Councilmember Baldwin.
I just had a question. This upcoming on Saturday, there's been a death in my family, and so I do have to miss the middle portion. And I have a question actually for the budget. I know that Sherry had offered some options for us to increase our general budget and that we were about $560,000, I think, over budget, which she didn't seem worried about because of the way things are gonna eventually roll out. But are there other ways of, because in looking through the options that were given, I feel like it's putting a lot of pressure on taxpayers to kind of fix that issue. And so they didn't sit well with me, the options, I guess, that were given. And I'm just wondering if there are other alternatives, one of them never being something people are a fan of, but, you know, making cuts in a budget, just like you would if you were, you know, organizing your own budget at home. And so, I don't know. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that. I just, I just had questions about that.
Do we have any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I mean, they're right. The only two ways to do it is take more or spend less. That half million is just what we know of right now. That's before any decision cards and additional personnel. I mean, I imagine we're probably going to be well over a million, million and a half based on this preliminary stuff, I know. So I don't know how we can do that. It's kind of up the department heads to come up with how to come up with cuts or savings and other ways. Fortunately, that's the only two things. And with all the raises we just gave and the new people that are wanting, they're wanting to hire and needing to hire, I'm not a fan of spending any fund balance on reoccurring costs. So I won't vote for anything that has a reoccurring cost that comes out of the ending fund balance, has to have a revenue stream. So those are really, really the options.
The only commentary I have is that we are right at the beginning of our budget cycle of this first that we're doing. So there's been lots and lots of discussion for hammering out a budget for this next cycle. So we'll probably.
Mayor, I can address this if you wish.
Okay, Ms. Ryerson, could you please?
Yes. So I was asked to provide additional revenue options that you could use either to support your general fund or your parks, which is what that memo was doing. I am concerned about the budget. I don't want to make anybody believe that I am not. We are currently over by $560,000 that I'm aware of, and Councilmember Evans fully supports 100% what he said. We have people asking for positions, so your budget is likely to be a couple million over what we actually have coming in for revenue. You never want to spend into your ending fund. Your budget needs to be balanced, which means your revenues support your expenditures. If you want to have a conversation about how the budget looks and concerns questions, more than happy to have that conversation with you.
Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
I guess my, I guess my question then is to the council is, is what is our plan to move forward by taxing the citizens more? Or are we gonna make budget cuts? Are we planning on both?
I had to kick the budget, scratch everything, and tell the mayor he's got to let go of 11 people, and then budget's balanced. I mean, we've got a whole bunch of options, and like you said, we're just at the beginning phases of it. This budget retreat, I don't think is gonna get into the meat and potatoes of what they're proposing because the budget decision cards won't even come out until, I imagine, September or October, probably.
Correct.
At that point, that's when we'll really be hammered. We don't know what.
Sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback. I sent an email out to the council giving you guys the calendar because I realized that this is a new process for many of you. So the calendar should have been in your email a week before last week. And that tells you kind of what the process is and when it will come to you guys. It's not even due to me by the directors until July, mid-July. So I won't know the true extent of how it looks until mid-July. I just wanted to give you an early warning that it's not looking good because I can see this from just the salaries alone.
Are there other options other than department heads coming forward and saying we have?
Yeah, I mean, your biggest expense is staff. You would have to cut staff in order to balance this budget, in my belief. And you have people coming forward, you'll find out, well, in the retreat packet, you have people asking for more staff, not asking to cut their staff. So as Councilmember Evans indicated, you have two options. You can increase revenues or you can reduce expenditures.
There's no other options to cut other things, programs?
Sure. I mean, you could cut programs. You can't cut the police, obviously. It's a, it's a mandatory function. There are mandatory functions that you can't, yeah, and I do too. There are mandatory functions that you can't cut, but there are some functions that you can cut. You can cut recreation, but that is also self-supporting. You can cut your senior center. You can cut, you know, you can't really cut the utility billing department because we're the ones who bill for your rates. There's mandatory requirements for a city clerk, you know, a city administrator, a mayor. There's a lot of things that you can't cut.
Chris Chief.
Please, yeah, please, Chief, I said, please.
And another, get the FTE chart. And see, you know, who's on there.
The only revenue option is that B and O? Is that the new, you know, additional revenue option?
There's that, and there's that transportation district, benefit district that we voted down five years ago where we can tax the tabs up to $50 per vehicle.
That'll be popular.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
I had a question about Section H. That was the one for citizen comments. I was just curious, and I don't know if this is just the way things are done or if it's a certain thing, but I know when people come in person, they can come without registering and can just talk. Is there a reason why if people want to comment either on the phone or virtually that they have to sign up for that prior to?
I need it in order to call their names. If I don't know who it is or their screen name, then we have no idea to unmute them. Everybody is muted when they come in.
If, if they're coming in on the, and again, I don't know how the process works, so I'm just asking questions, but if somebody is up there and they were to do something like raise their hand or, when I run classrooms and there's, I have students in there and they'll, you know, post a comment or something like that, is that something that we can or can't see?
We could see it, but now you're asking one of the clerks up here to also keep track of that as we're recording, doing the mics, watching the cameras, and taking notes.
Okay.
So it's just an additional thing that, you know, you just see a hand there, not everybody even looks at that. As you can tell, we know the mayor doesn't always call someone who has a hand.
Right. Okay. Yeah, the only reason I'm asking is sometimes when we have discussion, you know, I think there are sometimes people that are on the, on the, you know, online that then have something that they want to respond to once it comes to citizen comments. And so that's, I just don't want people not to have the opportunity, even if they're virtual, but if it, if it's, I mean, yeah, that's, I just have a question about that.
It's the easiest way to do it, well, doing virtual. Council wants to do hyper, so we have to figure out how to do that as way as well we can.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further open discussion, now we have to review the council minutes. Councilmember Watson. It has some minor clerk changes to it, otherwise they're correct. Good job. Very good, thank you, Councilmember Watson. Okay, we have one discussion item that needs action tonight. Madam Clerk.
This motion may be 2271 for discussion. The council motion would be to appoint three city officials as senior delegates to represent the city of Bonnie Lake at the 2022 Association of Washington City's Annual Conference Business Meeting to be held in Dan Cooper, Washington.
Go move. Okay, let's have some discussion.
We only have three signed up.
Yeah, I think there's somewhere you're going, so those two. Oh, okay. Do we have a motion to adopt that?
Is the mayor going?
The mayor's going, yeah.
You could also, you know, the poor mayor and our staff could, anywhere. They also could pick anyone.
So currently, we have the mayor, Deputy Mayor Carter, Councilmember Fullerton, and Councilmember Baldwin going.
Other staff members? And yourself, Mr. Mayor?
You really just say yes to one question, and that's pretty much it.
Yeah, well, you know, there was that other issue that we were, was that gonna be a problem?
Well, I'm more than happy to let, let our industrious council members listen while I do some lobbying.
It is a grant.
Okay, well, I believe it is a matter that is action, but to take a vote on it. All in favor of Councilmember Fullerton, Councilmember Baldwin, and Deputy Carter? Are they gonna be able to vote?
If you don't actually go, then.
Yeah.
Mayor's physically gonna be there.
Yeah, well, we're planning on physically being there, but yeah, we are reading through all of these protocols here.
There's a concern with.
Kind of a shocker.
It looked like there was just, you just needed a negative test prior.
A negative test from a certain.
I don't know who it is.
Most of the track crews have been.
Yeah, right here.
I know the four, I couldn't go somewhere because they required me to go to Walgreens. They wouldn't accept a mail-in COVID test or one from the city, and they wouldn't accept one from the tent people. So I need to make sure that we get it from the proper place because apparently not all the tests are the same.
So on that link I sent you guys, there's a link that you can look at the different places to go get that testing, and the one across the street.
It is, okay, fabulous.
Okay, we're ready to adopt our three delegates.
Is there alternates on that? How does that work? Like if we nominate three that are going?
We don't have to have three, it's up to.
Right, but I was wondering about if there's, you know, if somebody gets sick, they get hit by a car, then we have three.
That would more than likely be me, just from a point of view, and.
Just wondering.
Process of.
I've been longing to vote for the last four months.
Take care of our council, you mayor.
For something. Anyway, let's, let's get in the minute. All in favor say aye for the, for our designated delegates. How about we are clear to that?
Okay.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Very good, okay. Our delegates have been adopted. Now, we do have a couple of discussion items. The first one is on small business license fees, and I will hand the mic over to Councilmember Evans.
Okay. Turn it over to Ryan Jones.
All right. So I have a little bit of information to share. So that Councilmember Evans brought up the idea of perhaps raising the threshold on the exemption that's currently our municipal code for business licenses, a bit about what that exemption is. Currently, our code contains exemption that allows businesses that are outside of city limits and make less than $2,000 in your gross revenues be exempt from getting a business license. The suggestion was that perhaps the threshold is raised, and I think at the time that threshold suggested maybe $10,000.
Yeah.
So a couple of things to note there. First of all, I think that the discussion was that this would be done as a benefit to local business. It's important to note that this exemption only applies to businesses that are outside city limits. So this doesn't impact any businesses that are inside Bonnie Lake City Limits. All businesses inside Bonnie Lake City Limits will continue to have to get business licenses and renew their business licenses to maintain them.
The intent was the ones inside the city limits.
Okay. So this raising the threshold or making.
I didn't realize there was a designation between.
Yeah, this changing the threshold would have no, would not change anything regarding this.
Okay.
So if that was the intent, making.
What could we do about doing a inside the city limits of those that make less than $1,000, not having to have a city business license, not a state one, but a city?
Well, I suppose you could always propose some kind of change to code where you institute some kind of a threshold. It would be something new. There's nothing like that in code now. I guess the question that I would have in return is, at a time when you're struggling to keep your general fund funded, is that the direction you want to go where you're cutting revenue?
I don't see why you want to do that.
And just to give you some numbers, just, just so that we got something to plan around, total revenue from business licenses in 2021 was $123,000, $124,000. Inside city limits was $55,000. In 2020, inside city limits was $51,000. Inside city limits in 2019 was another $51,000. 2018, department revenue, didn't break them out separately at that time in city versus outside city, but total revenue was $108,000. So it's not an insignificant amount of money that you would be potentially impacting that is revenue to your general fund, so I just throw that out of consideration. But certainly, if that is something that the council wants to consider, that option is yours to discuss. I leave that to you.
Is that the total monies that the city actually receives? Or is that the permit, because they apply at the state level, right?
That is the city's share. Yeah, that's the, that's the $60 fee that the city.
So the applicant actually pays more to the state likely, depending on what their business license looks like?
That's correct.
Well, my question would be kind of a jurisdictional one. You were suggesting at the beginning of this discussion that the business license is threshold outside the city limit. What, what power do we have to influence any of that? It's outside the city limits. I don't think we have a, I think it's a jurisdictional issue, but we don't have any power to do.
We do, we do, if I understand your question correctly, they're going to do business inside city limits, though. We require that they have a Bonnie Lake business.
That's a general contract. Yes, that makes sense.
Exactly.
Well, just like I had, I was signing merchandise in Tacoma a number of years ago. Had to have a Tacoma license out there in Bonnie Lake Business License. No, that makes sense.
Ryan, this is all related to the RCW 39 or 3590080?
I believe that's correct. I don't, I don't have that reference in front of me.
What was, it was $50,000 for that portion?
So I'll just reference 2021 total revenue from both new licenses and renewals or in city.
Okay.
Was $55,000.
$55,430. And I would imagine a majority of those are making more than $10,000. I mean, there's a lot of home occupation businesses in the city, but.
And I could, I could do some additional research, and I could probably break that down further.
And, and yeah, it's, what is it, $65 or something like that?
Sixty.
Sixty. You know, it's, it's not a super significant amount, but to the Etsy person that, you know, sells $3,000 or $4,000 a year on, you know, printed t-shirts or whatever, it's just the city saying something that, hey, we, we respect and appreciate that, and we understand that you don't, what benefit are they getting from the city is really what my question is. If they pay that $60, are they getting any protection from the city, any services from the city, anything from the city if they're sitting at home selling items from a heat press that they have sitting on a desk, desk next to their computer?
It doesn't matter whether you have a small business or a larger one. My business is always outside, I'm getting it from the city, and I'm shipping things out outside city all the time. I have a business license too.
Yeah.
And they're getting the benefit from my local customer, 9391, did he get that benefit?
Well, they'll still get the sales tax from any business done. I'm just saying, what, what benefit do I get? I mean, if I'm doing an exchange of money for a service such as a business license or a water bill, I, there should be an equal exchange for, for the, the action, the transaction that's happening. If I'm a big business here and I'm making $80,000 a month selling, you know, baked goods or, or, you know, a Subway or something, I totally get that. That's the cost of doing business. But if you're making $2,000 or $3,000, I mean, I don't know why we, we should extort that from them without giving them any sort of benefit for that service. To me, it's, it's, it's a transactional taking of the money because that's what the state RCW says we can do. And I don't know how many under $10,000 there would be in this business or in this city, but I just think out of, out of respect for the small businesses here, we say we want to support small business. I think even $60 is a show of support for small business that we appreciate their business without having to take their money for a simple license fee.
I understand your consideration that way, but I just, you're also doing the business whether you're, we can control how the sales tax works for a local one with a small business without a license.
No, I'm not talking the state license. I'm just talking the city license. You still have to get the state license, but there's a rider that you sign up for through the Department of Revenue for a business, fill out your corporation or LLC stuff, it says what is your address? You type it in, it says $60 to Bonnie Lake. That's what I'm talking about, is that, that city portion of the business license, not the sales tax, not, not, you know, what is owed to the state, but just, you know, if we got a check mark on there that says you intend to gross more than $10,000 annually, yes or no, then waiving that of some sort or doing something to save them.
I appreciate your concern for people that live that position, but it's really hard to check for checks and balances that actually is doing, that goes sales.
I mean, it's not.
And $2 you're talking about adds up a little bit for us anyway.
But even if we wipe the entire thing for every business, it's $50,000.
Right.
So if only 10%, of those businesses generate less than $10,000, we're talking $5,000 here, which is not a, it's not the difference between adding a new officer or, or, you know, a new parts worker.
Well, a typical that, that comes to mind with me would be our vendors that tunes the tanks. You know, they're within the city limits. They're more than likely not gross or netting more than $10,000 with what they're doing over the summer. I mean, are they paying the business license?
They're, they're exempt.
Okay.
I believe they're exempt by RCW as a, there's a special, special clause in here about.
You have special.
Special advantage in the new trucks and vendors.
But if you're a contractor outside or any.
Yeah, and, and the contractors, I'm not worried about, are the ones that are outside the city limits, not paying. Talking about our residents that have a home-based business that sells toy candles for Christmas time that, you know, wants the, the business license so that they can operate legitimately but not be tagged with another fee.
All right, I believe that Councilmember Fullerton.
Special events in the new trucks and vendors.
But if you're a contractor outside or any--
Yeah. And the contractors, I'm not worried about, are the ones that are outside the city limits. Not paying. Talking about our residents that have a home-based business that sells toy candles for Christmas time that, you know, wants the business license so that they can operate legitimately, but not be tagged with another fee.
All right, I believe that Councilmember Fullerton--
Yeah, so my question is, you know, what about like these little multi-level marketing, you know, businesses that people start up and they're selling products out of their house? You know, do they have to get a business license as well? Because a lot of times, you know, they're really not making any money.
Their retail sales in the city of Bonnie Lake have been licensed.
So, yeah, I mean, for like little multi-level businesses that are just trying to, you know, live the American dream and just kind of getting kick-started, and a lot of them have to buy product upfront in order to have something to sell, and then they're having little parties out of their house. You know, I mean, that seems kind of--
That's hard to track.
Oh, Mr. Johnson.
I was just gonna add that as far as the return on that cost of licenses, it does ensure that, especially with a home occupation business, that they conduct their business according to other requirements in our code. It's a touch point for us to be able to ensure that they're aware of code requirements for how they run their business out of their home. Because we do have a lot of issues when it comes to code enforcement with, at times, with home occupations and how the businesses are run. And I do think it is, it would not be--
No idea.
I would be remiss if I didn't say that $50,000 would actually get public works two to three. And so for public works, that isn't insignificant.
Right, but I'm not talking the whole thing. I'm just talking businesses that would generate $100,000 here.
And Mr. Sullivan, would that be something that our brand-new code enforcement officer would be tasked with? That would you get her trained?
I don't know what tasked with, but the code enforcement officer would be the person responsible for doing enforcement that's related to home occupations. And we get lots of different home occupation requests from multi-level marketing, welding shops, woodworking shops, to I want to spray paint, I want to refinish cars and paint cars, which has significant impacts on the neighborhood. And so those types of home occupations, we don't allow. And so when they submit these business license requests, that's the point that we get out there in front of them and say, before you invest money, before you invest time, these are things that are not allowed in the city. But then when we do show up for code enforcement at a later date, they've already-- So, you know, home occupations could be a wide range of things, from those things to auto body, the auto body detailing in garages without, you know, proper ventilation protection and creating air pollution for the neighborhood.
And we don't want to stir up a hornets. Last thing, our city hall needs a bunch of Amway lawyers coming.
Jason and I talked once about home businesses, like homebrews and stuff. They want to have a drive up in the driveway, people drive by and come by and something take home like or whatever, or pop and stuff are signed there. And those, we may not do much for sales, but those type of things require some type of verification to be done properly by the city too.
Okay, so in order to get this into the code, what, oh, oh, that's a problem with my--
I get what you're saying. And so I would be curious also to find out what even portion of the $55,000 would be affected, and I would guess that it would be minimal as well. Yeah.
Okay, so we had this on the workshop discussion, so where do we go from here? Is this something that council would want to put in committee or--
To get it-- Probably go back to finance. Go back to finance, I would assume. Biggest spot with Justin is to talk about--
Just a suggestion, if you'd like, I can work with Department of Revenue to see if we can break out that amount that we were discussing that would be under that new threshold.
Yeah, because it would have to be--
Help guide that in a little bit more.
It would have to work, somehow be an option on the DOR's website for when you sign up, that waiver or something. I don't want them to pay it and then us have to refund it, you know, because at that point, we've spent the $60 on that.
Ryan, did you have a comment? Okay. For the record, she's shaking her head. All right, well, so, yes, Mr. Johnson, that sounds like a wonderful thing to do. So prior to putting in committee, should we have the answer to that?
Thanks, Ryan.
All righty, so let's move on. Next, we have a discussion on a grant for the Safe Routes to School program. And Mr. Johnstone, it's your turn again.
Yes, something that, no offense, Councilmember Evans, but something a little more fun.
Chickens and bees.
That's what you make of it.
So you can definitely tell it's grandcy. So, yes, Safe Routes to School grant program. This is something I've been wanting to get started for place and through him. And so I reached out to him, and we had a brief discussion on some of their priorities for their more higher-profile walking routes. And I reviewed their capital facilities plan. And in Bonnie Lake, this is one of a couple of routes, walking routes that are identified in their plan that could really benefit from some upgrades, some additional sidewalks that make the route safer for kids. So I went out, completed a brief survey, looked it over, talked to consultants, and we've taken a look and decided to move forward here and present to you all this route as a potential route to apply for funding. This would be 190th extending north from Bonnie Lake Elementary up to 75th as the first phase, with a second phase at a later date to be funded from 75th up to Bonnie Lake Boulevard. Going first to 75th provides logical terminology, break through the grant because while it's kind of a roundabout route, there is sidewalk that goes south on 75th to Locust, then up to, I think my battery is dying. And then goes up Locust to Bonnie Lake Boulevard, and then you get sidewalk that's on Bonnie Lake and then walk back north to Park and what have you, establish a network that way. In the future, then, if we were to engage in the second phase, you could just continue up 190th that way. So it is a pretty good project and something I'm pretty excited about. It's not necessarily the easiest. In this first phase, you have to cross the outlet from Lake, I believe it's Lake Bonnie. There's some sensitive areas that we may have to contend with. The planning level cost estimate right now to do that first phase would be approximately $2 million. That includes a pretty healthy contingency because we put in the sensitive areas. You just never know what you're gonna get. Jason can tell you. I see that smile. Yeah. But the good news here is, is that each year we budget $250,000 to address crosswalks and another $200,000 to address sidewalks. And so my plan would be that provided my budget request for those items were to get approved to get the 23, 24 by any, I would take $250,000 from one of those two line items in 23 to use as match. So that would be a little bit over 10% match or to use towards this grant, which would be a nice little bit of match money to use to grant these grant funds. This would be roughly on the same schedule as the Headbike Program grants that we talked about just a couple of weeks ago. This would, this application is due June 6th. The monies with notification of award, I believe, happens in January. Funds become available in July. So as far as how it matches up with our budget, that works out pretty well from the timing perspective. So pending your approval, I would ask our consultant friends to continue forward. They are doing this as a marketing effort for us, so there's no charge coming from them to complete the application and get that turned in. And then we'll see what happens as far as award is concerned.
That was my question. My assumption is going to be that you will aim to, like, saying that these consultant allies that you have, they're going to be doing the applying for the grant?
They will be, yes.
Well, okay, Councilmember Watson.
You keep taking my money from Bexham Royal Drive. You didn't really have it. I let you take it for other areas of the city, which I am very important.
So I've got a-- We've got a CIB funding workshop on May 30th. So I've got a--
Excellent. The area you're talking about, I drive all the time, there's lots of kids there. It's vital. It's very dangerous, and I would agree this should be done. So I support it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion to be reported?
I would agree. I think this needs to be done. My question would be if for some reason a grant doesn't go through or something like that, the matching $250,000, does that stay with us? Do we have to pay that out or anything?
Correct. Would it just stay with us?
Okay, any further discussion? Is it something that we need to put to a formal vote, or is it something that we just get to know?
I have a general consensus.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, last, oh, last. We have a discussion on motion AB 2264 for the park plan RFP. Mr. Sullivan, can you enlighten us with--
I will do my best. We kind of wanted to get this on with the city council before this weekend's workshop because we know that parks are on as a big council retreat item, just to give the council kind of a position of where we're at, and then no action is expected tonight, no decision is expected tonight. But we wanted to have the briefing, let the retreat happen, and then come back to see what that action would be. So as we've talked about so many times, we haven't done a real park plan update since 2018. In 2015, we didn't have the funds to do one, so we kind of cobbled together what we needed to do to get over our, over what we needed to have as a bare minimum. And we were able to rely on a lot of the surveys that were done in 2008, 2010 because of the windows. That park plan was certified through 2021 by RCO. And I'm gonna take a pause here before we get into the rest of it. The Washington State Growth Management Act does not require park plans as a mandatory element in your comprehensive plans, listed as one, but since the funding has never been made available, the Growth Management Act does not require you to have a park plan. However, if you do not have a park plan that has been certified by the RCO office, then you can't apply for grants that are issued by RCO. So right now, we could not apply for any RCO grant. We can keep the one that we have, but going forward, we're not eligible for grant. Also, without a Parks Master Plan, you're really not going to score high for other grants out there. That we use those, you get points with these projects that we're applying for, whether it's sidewalks or trails or any adopted plans, they give you extra points. Outside of that, you lose them. So that's kind of where we're at on the legal framework. The other, what you have to also have is in your capital facilities element, you do have to have a list of capital projects for what you are going to collect park impact fees for at a level of service standard that you have to adopt if you want to collect your park impact. You don't want to collect your park impact fees, you don't have to have those items either, but then you lose that revenue for parks. So this is kind of paying all three of those elements that we need to have. Additionally, I tried to kind of lay this out in the memo. There are a number of things that we have committed to in the past that we are now having to figure out how to resolve. The first is there's about 65,000 square feet of Allen York Park that 20 years ago, if not, well, probably 30 years ago, 30, 35 years ago, was converted from non-park uses to, from park use to non-park use. That would be the decamp facility, the area around the decamp facility to cell phone power lease. We've been, I've had multiple conversations with RCO. Even if we were to go out there today and restore the decamp facility back to park space, can't do anything about the leases, they would still require us to create an equal value of that land because that's if it was a leasehold tax back into the park system with land. So for example, if the leasehold tax for 30 years of using that property was $200,000, we'd have to put $200,000 of property back somewhere in the park system.
That's about 10 square feet, right?
Yeah, it's a lot. But I don't know what 30 years of lease. It would be cheap just to do it as a permanent swap. Even if you put it back as park land, the path is easier than the analysis. So we do have to get 65,000 square feet of land somewhere added to Allen York Park and permanently protect it as park space. Luckily, our ideal is to be over at the Orson Hall site as the candidate, but there's a whole process that you have to go through to do that. And if you don't go through the whole process, it doesn't count. So that's part of it, and that's going all the way back to our 72 lease obligation that was permanently on the property for as long as the world exists. So that's one that this plan will also address, is going through that public notification process and public process to do that land swap, so we can clear that out.
So that cell tower, though, is the revenue for that, this general fund revenue?
No, it goes to the park's fund, but it still doesn't matter.
If it's park use, just so somebody's saying that you can't--
No, this--
They don't like it?
No, RCO says that is not a park use, even though we're making revenue.
Because it's kind of, was the idea of some of those leases that we put up there was like, oh, we could make money for the parks, so we'll let those people use this space for the parks. It's like renting a tent down there, like a cabana that somebody has rented. Now we're, see what I'm saying?
RCO does not agree.
Sounds like we could have a, yeah, I understand. I agree with what you're saying. I'm just saying like this is kind of an incomplete conversation.
Right. RCO position is, so we are making money for the parks. We explain that. And all the money from the towers will be to provide park revenue. Cell phone towers are not a park use. It has nothing to do with the revenue. It has to do with the structures itself.
What do we call it? A radio tree?
Whatever we call it won't change the use. It is for cellular communication.
Okay.
So we have two of those, one over by Ballfield 4 and one over by the decamp facility that we have to-- Like I said, I think that finding the compensatable land is easy, but it's going through the process. The other one is that when the city took the capital money in 2019 to buy a piece of property now by Victor Falls, they were committed to providing a detailed trail and recreation plan for Victor Falls Park within three years, which would be 2022. I've already talked with the Pierce County Conservation Future Stewardship Group and have been completed for more time. They have given--
They have or have not?
They have.
Good.
So-- Yeah, I was in real throat COVID. You know, people leaving--
Yes.
Pouring me, I dump on my lap, hurt with me. I'm drowning here. So I got more times like-- We also have some issues at Allen York Park with the current master plan. The areas, you know, we've been talking about the need for more boat parking, how we're gonna do bike parking. The master plan that was adopted by the council back then put the future boat trailer parking right smack dab in the middle of the weather. So it'll never be built or developed. So that would be the other part of this, and looking at the reconfiguration of the boat launch, which was a council, specific council direction and a couple of council meetings. So those are kind of, in addition to getting that certified, once again, with RCO, and there's a specific process that we have to go through as developing the plan, that covers that, that covers that, covers all the work that we need to do ourselves square away around with our previous grant agreements. And I will say, if you become known as a city that does not fulfill your grant agreements, it's very hard to get other grants, even if you qualify, because you're considered a high risk. The evidence is a credit score. If you get all the grants and then blow off all the requirements, once you get what you wanted, you then have to consider it high risk. And that, those things do get out. So the RFP would hire a consultant to complete all of this work, which would include the public outreach, public open houses, updating all of the master plans, updating the Allen York master plan, preparing one for Midtown Park, preparing the one that we're required to do for Big Town Park, looking at what's going on in the other facilities, and coming up with a plan to do all of that, plus budgeting, plus identifying the cost for everything. Plus budget, plus identifying the cost for everything. That, all that work would then be fed into F C S to do a new rate analysis to beat the park impact fees. The council can then set what they want the park impact fee would be. That would then be fed back into the budget, the kind of the form, the performer plan, the park's plan to see if there's sufficient revenue and if there's not, how are we going to phase this? Because the park plan can have the ultimate goal build out and then we phase it to only complete what we complete in twenty years. So you could have a plan that takes fifty years, sixty years typically, but we're only going to do twenty years. But you at least have a ideal of what you're doing so you're not building things that you would then have to rip out to build up. And then provide, and it would also look at long-term maintenance. So like the ball field that we're building now has a significant, I've been talking with Jack and Orion has too, has a significant long-term maintenance cost that is reoccurring that we're going for as long as we own that facility. So the consultant will also be looking at what are those long-term maintenance costs? And so what is it going to cost you to build the project? Which is a one-time cost, which is usually easy to come up with, and it was the ongoing fifty-year reoccurring cost to continue to maintain that. In talking with people and talking with Brian and talking with consultants, we, you know, we're basing that if we were to issue the R F P and we were to board the consultant contract, it would take about eighteen months to complete all the work. And you're looking at the cost of about twenty-five, about a quarter million to almost nearly a half million to complete all of the elements. Plus, yeah, and that would include the forty-five thousand, up to about forty-five thousand dollars to complete the rate of help. So you're looking at anywhere from a quarter million to a half million dollars. We won't know until we get the responses back. We have identified two budgetary sources of revenue that were in the current budget that could help cover the cost. There was a hundred forty-five thousand dollars allocated for the Midtown Park Master Plan. And it was a hundred thousand dollars allocated to do a downtown civic campus master. So parks are more important than downtown civic campus, policy decision. Then we have, we have up to two hundred forty-five thousand dollars already in the budget, but we could be two hundred fifty thousand dollars short. Um, and so we want to make sure that the council is, makes a decision, one, to authorize the issuance of the R F P, realizing that when it comes back, we're likely going to have to do budget amendments to add the additional costs. I won't say these are out there, one-time costs, but they are good for six, seven years.
So that's, I get, I'm still a little confused as far as the process is concerned. And what are the resources that we would be extending to um to authorize the issuance of the R F P?
So I've already written the R F P. The R F P is in the, in the, in the comp, it is in, attached to the packet for council's review. It outlines all of the deliverables. It outlines what they would expect, how we're going to select the consultant with scoring sheet. So the cost for issuing the R F P, I'm going to state, would be the cost for the noticing of the newspaper, which runs a couple hundred bucks. So getting the R F P out is easy. It's not high cost. The scoring would be done by staff, so no cost there. The cost will come and is when I bring the, here is the top consultant and here is the money that is needed to pay for.
Sherry's got a smile.
Yeah, that is all. We did put two alternatives in there because all councils, I know Councilmember Clive always says this. We did just a general community open house as the base bid, which is, you know, you come and we gather what we can. The bid alternative is you do a statistically valid survey. Statistically valid survey is going to be significantly expensive, is not a requiring element, but it's always brought up of, well, who said this? So we said the only way you can know for sure if it's really what people want is to do statistically valid survey. That cost would be broken up as an individual line item. The other one that we put in there as a cost, as a bid alternative, is to look at the way we do our level of service standard. The way we have it done meets the minimum. It works, boat compliant, it's state law compliant, it works for impact fees. Howard, it's not the best practice. So we did as a bid alternative list that those two things, the council could clearly still be all of the state requirements and not do the bid alternative. So we called them out specifically. But yeah, that's why we wanted to bring this forward. We're not expecting, I'm here to answer any questions. Uh, we weren't expecting action, but trying to lay out like this is what needs to be done to get everything done.
Well, when would you like action? The, when do you like back on?
Well, currently it is on the agenda for the council meeting after the.
After the retreat.
Okay, yeah, after the retreat. That's when we have it on the agenda. I don't know what's going to transpire.
As early as the retreat next Tuesday.
Yeah, it's currently scheduled for.
Public is a pledge.
Yes.
I will be in San California.
Yeah, that's like.
You're very smart.
Very smart.
I will be in another state.
There is a park missing.
Which one?
Like owner.
Yeah, that is a missing park.
That's why you brought it forward.
Can we make that movement?
Thousand dollars there and quadruple the value of it, right?
All right. Oh, yes, Deputy Mayor. How many grant, how many R C O grants have we got in the past? I don't know if you know this. Have we got in the past? And like, how much money have they given us? I know we just got a half, how much did we get through the Ball Field Four? Three hundred and fifty thousand? There, Victor Falls. Yeah, Allen York Parkway back, there was stuff around from Trailhead and we purchased some property with, for the trail with ours. So there's a high, I don't know, those stuff here and there. Total, I would say less than a million. So you're still getting a two to one R O I.
Yeah, I was kind of like, okay, for less than a million dollars and you spent.
But I will say, we also used the park plan to justify, that helped justify the grants that we got from P S R C for the Fennel Creek Trail, which was three and a half, almost seven million dollars combined.
That's your bank for your buck.
Right, so it depends on how that plan gets utilized. So you don't have a park plan at all and you can't even put those in there. If you don't have an R C O fund, you can't even apply. And there are funds for like helping with boat launches, helping with swimming here. So I think there was more bringing opportunities out there that we could have gone for, but we just didn't have the capacity to do the application. So it's, it's hard to say the past is an indication of the future. If you have a really good park plan, that wipes a lot of the green. Basically pulling policies and, you know, information out of the green.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, uh, councilmember, this is a quick question. Of the grants that we got around a million dollar pool, is our win percentage? I guess that's the better question.
I don't know.
R B, you have it?
Yeah, that one I don't even know, and I wouldn't even know how to find because it's not a list of grants we've applied for that we didn't get. So I don't even, I wouldn't even hazard a guess.
Okay. And Councilmember, go on.
Uh, just a comment. I I do remember the presentation that was made before in in talking about the need for this um from the R C O. As far as the R C O is concerned, is this, are these things that are coming down from Washington State? This is state-level grants that are, that we're wanting to apply for, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, so I love the idea of foresight. I know that, you know, you guys have talked about during that meeting, the idea of not feeling blindly together anymore and coming up with, you know, a plan. So I do love the idea of coming up with a plan uh to create some foresight. I think we're, um, you know, I I have some similar thoughts that Deputy Mayor Carter had in as far as the monies that are coming in, and I know it is trivial. It's hard to figure that out since we didn't have a plan in place to even apply. And we didn't have our, you know, ducks in our own. I I get that. But, you know, I think the thing that is difficult in the acceptance of grants, right, is is grants, especially from Washington State. They're always putting a tag on it. You know, they're always putting some sort of requirement on us to do. Are we? Are we proceeding with caution when we're applying for certain grants? Because I think sometimes there are grants that they'll say, oh, yeah, here's some money. But I also require you to do this, and this is a city, and this is.
Grants that we apply for. I would say every grant I've ever applied for, none of them grant, because we look at all those conditions. Those are in the grant agreement that goes to. But there's nothing that, once the grant agreement is accepted, is not known by the council accepting the grant. I'll say that. Just like the nineteen seventy-two grant had specific things in it. In nineteen ninety, when there was a different city council, they they didn't, you know, there was, there was a miscommunication. They're not going back to look at yours. So I think that's more of the issue is is the the grant agreement specifically lays out. And then once the grant agreement goes in, they can't add things. The only grants that really had a bunch of.
Assets?
Yeah, are the federal ones. Those are the the ones, and that's why you'll hear us when we say this is state money, because they don't have the same heightened level for different items that the federal grants that come through the Washington State Department of Transportation. So if you look at the Fennel Creek Trail, part of it's federally granted and they're having to do a significantly higher level of record keeping than state money. So it depends on who the granting agent, agency is, what the requirements are. But all the requirements that I laid out are specifically spelled out in the grant before it's. So it it's a decision that's made to accept the money with those, because they're usually tied to the project itself. For example, we're giving you money to purchase property from Washington Conservation Futures for public access. So therefore, if you're going to buy the property with our money, you need to provide the public access or apply for the public access. So they're, they're a tit for tat for what you're applying to grant for. So it's not going to be like, you're agreeing to grant to do conservation futures. And by the way, you have to violate tax, right? They're not going to be disproportionately associated with the grantee.
Okay.
If that answers the.
It does.
The question. All right, Councilmember Swam.
Yeah, you know, obviously we probably end up needing the plan because otherwise you're stuck. Good, you're looking out there at the other. I'm just kind of worried about the timing of things, you know, again, needing the plan, but yet, you know, if we go out there, we'll have this great preview for our um. Preview and show Saturday extended.
And public is welcome to join.
Public is welcome to join, always. And ten dollars a dot so far in case of division. So the timing of everything, you know, because there's certain council members are very interested in like, say, midtown build out, right? And what I'm rightly hearing is, of course, as we go down this road with this plan, which you, we need, I don't disagree with the plan, we we have to have a plan. You know, what is the underlying thing that we're doing or not doing with the park system itself? Whether, just the Midtown Park would be a good one to take example, right?
Right.
There'd be like, well, um, you know, from the council's perspective, what do you, you know, that'll be the Saturday discussion.
Right, there would, there would be that delay because you put more, start spending money on improving partners. You know, that the plan you're going to do.
That's how good you are? So you, I heard twenty-four months.
Well, I was, I said about eighteen, I I was thinking eighteen months. So the R F P was issued this year. Have a consultant on board by the end of the summer, middle of summer. And then we could have a plan done by the end of twenty twenty-three, so you could start doing improvements in twenty twenty-four. What I would say then is if you want to do, if the council's really wanting to get things moving, is in the budget, just put park improvements at Midtown Park for the dollar figure, and then in twenty twenty-four, we can find the project that fits within that dollar figure for Midtown Park.
If that's, you know, the kind of reasonable thing to look at or something, but, you know, you're still talking multiple councils, councils and slash mayor's elections down the road to get to that point. And then you're looking at, you know, all that political fun stuff. And but there's also the aspect of, you know, take again Midtown Park, right? So at one point in time, it was like, oh, we're going to have a community center and pool, and that was, you know, trails and what have you. Other plans for ball fields or whatever, multi-sports fields and things like that. So, you know, there's, some of those are competing needs, and of course, you being the expert person is going to go is like, what? The plan will figure out how that's going to go down, right? And all this kind of stuff, right? You know, I mean, what what should we put out of the Midtown, right? You know? And that's where I get a little bit of a problem because me being elected official, I'm thinking, well, you know, there were some good plans at one point in time and I don't know from the council's perspective and how much input, you know, because you're, you could literally go, you know, if the council's like, man, we are a swimming community. We have got to have a pool. That is a priority part. And albeit, when you get done with that plan, there will be a pool in somewhere. You know, isn't that kind of weird? But alternately, you could have a a council that, you know, elected officials that are like, you know, we're like a soccer community, baseball soccer community. That's all we are. That is, we have got to have that in there. And by the way, it'll come back and wow, there's no pool in that plan and there's a great sports field. That's, that's the kind of thing that from my perspective, for the council, probably, that you guys ought to think about on Saturday because I think you, I think you need some, you know, input into, when you, when you go out with that R F P, that are, when it comes back, or at least, you know.
Well, I would say, I would say the way we structured the R F P and we structured the park plan.
Yeah.
It's built to build that consensus as it needs to develop, so.
Sure, but that, and then, and then my challenge to me and my fellow council members is why don't we have?
What we're.
Well, that's the thing, right?
There might be consensus on the calendar. When I'm talking about this, that the park plan, the R P is set up, is built to have a steering committee. That that steering committee would have one council member, one park commissioner, one planning commissioner, and one parks commissioner. So all the different people that have different aspects to go into the park to help guide that plan across the broader consensus.
True.
The other thing I would say is, we do have a lot of work to do in Midtown Park and not a great defined plan of how to do it. I know there's lots of action. However, we also know that there's a lot of desire to fix ball fit, to fix the trailer parking. So you could have a project in twenty twenty-three working on trailer parking and a project working in twenty twenty-four on Midtown Park. I know budget, I know Sherry's cringing on budget, but I'm just talking in, in a programable, in a program like. So if you're moving forward both on Allen York Park and Midtown Park.
That's fine.
And if there are decisions the council makes about a specific element, that would just be baked into the plan as a given, for example. We're not going to revisit whether or not there should be an athletic field at the old Moriarty.
That was going to be there for a while.
It's built in. We're not going to, but we would evaluate. For some of the work right now, if the council says, no, we want to do it on Ball Field Four, we're going to push forward with that plan. That becomes a baked in part of the plan and the consultant's just told, this is how it's going to be, and then we figure out everything around it. It's a policy decision. We're not, I'm not saying which one's better. I'm just saying if you want to have all of the options, you want to have a long-term plan that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That is built with community support, this is what you do.
Yeah, you definitely need to do that. There's no, no doubt that you need to do the plan.
I will have reservations. Okay, sorry. Thank you for that.
Challenge the county.
Councilmember Evans. I I I glanced over the R F P and it looks great. Um, is there something in there, and I didn't do a word search, but that would search out and recognize potential wetland or potential problems so that we don't have a beautiful park plan at Allen York that we can't build because that one omission of boat trailer parking was missed in that?
Well, and that changed too, see, so that's good information, right? You know, because when we made that plan originally, it had the boat trailer parking in. And it it could go there, but the regulations changed over a period of time to change the actual delineation.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, and then preferences, so. And you can always move wetlands.
Yes, really.
You can, yes, theoretically, you can.
Does Eric change?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
These four times usually larger than.
At least.
So you have to find the property to build a wetland or purchase.
You know.
Yes, it's theoretically possible. Financially, not practically. Yes, to answer your question, it is that we also said that you're going to provide R J S later with all critical areas analysis. I will say one challenge with the Allen York Master Plan is the planning staff was not brought into that discussion until after it was adopted. So we didn't get a crack at it until way down the road. And that's what we're trying to avoid this time, is pulling all of the different disciplines together.
Okay. Because Costco sits on top of a wetland. Costco had to do that basically. Well, that was before Costco, but that's how some of the Fennel Creek area appeared. They had, they relocated that wetland.
Oh, that was a pond out there before.
Yeah, so this time around, doing the master plan, uh, the planning department will be. Yeah, so this time around, doing the master plan, the planning department will be part of that.
We're going to be meeting, we're going to be meeting and charging the combined department under, under Ryan.
And then are there going to be plan Bs on, you know, if, if this becomes a wetland, then we can move it over ten feet and, you know, we can do this.
We put our master contingency plan, but that's why we're trying to make this a well-rounded plan with open public meetings, having the stakeholder committee who do a parks planning, design arts commission in it, plus the city council member. And then there would be meetings with staff. So that would be myself, one of the planners in the office, Ryan as the director, operations to, the operation was not really part of the Allen York Park master plan development either, so they, they would be at the table to talk about maintenance costs. So it, it's trying to look at it at more than just what we want. It's what we want and what is feasible based on a number of different variables. And it just takes money and time to work through those, those things. We do know that there's no wetlands at Midtown Park. That was, that was the time when we did the WSHU forest, and we'll ride those analyses until I'm told we can't. Victor Falls, we know there's critical areas because of the Lyra Fall, and we know where the wetlands are at Midtown Park. So the three.
You just said there were no at Midtown.
I'm sorry.
I was, I was floored before I was against it.
Yes, I have a plan. I, I was listening. I'm so floored. We know where the wetlands are. And we've tried to put some protection in code, and there's offers from growing, and so those are things that we would look at, some steps that we would try to take to do that. But it's, I'm not going to say it's foolproof, but we are trying to cast a bigger tent and a bigger net to pull more different opinions and disciplines into the discussion.
Yeah, I just feel like we are right next to Lake Taps, even though we're called Bonnie Lake, we're not called Lake Taps. But I feel like we're a boating community, and people want to swim in the lake when there's water in there. So I would, for me, my number one priority is we need to have boat parking, boat trailer parking, not boat parking, but I'm just, yeah, so I would really like to have that definitely put into whatever plans you're doing. That's the most feedback that I get on a daily basis.
Well, since we are including last week's items, let's move on. So we have no public hearing, let's, we will go on to citizen comments. Do we have any citizenry who wish to comment?
So I will forego saying that they have, please station.
But you did. But I did anyway.
That's a warrior.
And we have no, we have no correspondence, so let's move on to the consent agenda, which could be. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So will.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, the consent agenda is adopted. We have no committee or full council issues. There is no executive or closed session. So seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. And thank you, council member.